Jody, you can help him if he forgets.
Just nudging.
What the assistant does, so. Clock watching.
He would have spent quite a bit of time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I watch it while it's on.
Good evening, Washington Courthouse. It is seven thirty P M. on July twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four. Time for our second regular meeting of this month. At this time, Mrs. Call will offer our invocation and Chief Dowding will lead us in the pledge. You can stand, please do.
Heavenly Creator, we come before you in our city council meeting to hear the concerns of citizens, to celebrate those among us who are retired and whose service has benefited this community. And as members of the community, we hope to instill good and virtue and follow your ways and your truths as we administer up here. In all we do, we give you thanks and blessings. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, Chief. Roll call, please.
Hawke.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Shilts.
Here.
Blair.
Here.
Call.
Here.
Christman.
Here.
Lynch.
Here. We have the minutes from our last meeting on July tenth. Anybody see any changes we need to make? Do we have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion that we accepted as they're written on there and they're printed.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Hawke.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Shilts.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Call.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Any communication, Mr. Denon?
None.
We have the Service Safety and Recreation Committee report from Mr. Hawke. You have a pretty pink piece of paper, Mr. Hawke.
Ended up in Atlantic City last week and went and got some saltwater taffy on the boardwalk. And I was eating it while I read my, and all my pages are sticking together. Anyway. The Service Safety and Recreation Committee met in the council chambers located at one oh-five North Main Street on Wednesday, July tenth, twenty-twenty-four at six P M. Ted Hawke presided, and those in attendance were Mr. Jim Christman, council member, Mr. Steve Shilts, council member, Mrs. Sylvia Call, council member, Mr. Caleb Johnson, council member, Mr. Jim Blair, council member, Mr. Dale Lynch, council chairperson, Mr. Gary Dean, service director, Mr. Jody Langley, assistant fire chief, Mr. Jeff Fenary, police chief, and Mr. Joe Denon, city manager. Number one, the committee benefited from a report by the fire department. Administration advised that Mr. Nick Brandon had been hired for the firefighter position. Number two, the committee thanked everyone involved with the Fire in the Sky Fire Work Program. Number three, the committee benefited from a report by the police department. Chief Fenary advised that Mr. Kyle Pickard had passed the police patrol certification exam and would begin field training within the upcoming week. Number four, the committee noted that applications had been received and testing would be conducted for the open police dispatch position. Number five, the administration advised the committee that a residential survey near five points had been completed concerning nuisance issues. Number six, Chief Fenary noted that the SRO program would be renewed with the city of Washington schools. Chief Fenary noted positive feedback regarding the program and especially noted the efforts of patrolman Justin Everhart from the department. Number seven, the administration noted discussions continued regarding police staffing. Number eight, the committee benefited from a report on the status of various service projects within the community. Number nine, the administration noted that depth repair work was completed on Clinton Avenue. Number ten, the committee noted that sewer line work had been completed at the intersection of Market Street and Clinton Avenue. Number eleven, the administration advised the committee that stormwater work had been completed near Arbor Village. Number twelve, the administration advised the committee of the Andrick Drive paving plan. Number thirteen, the administration advised the committee that Mr. Lance Heath, Tree Grant Coordinator, and members of the Tree Committee had made progress with Tree Grant. Number fourteen, the committee noted that a water leak detected on Rowling Street has been fixed. Number fifteen, the committee discussed firework concerns. The committee recommended that discussions continue. Number sixteen, the administration advised the committee that paving work was progressing. Number seventeen, the committee recommended that legislation be brought to council to proceed with the floodplain update. Number eighteen, the committee noted that general maintenance work was being completed at Iman, Washington and Christman Parks. Number nineteen, the committee noted that the administration hired seasonal employees for the Washington Park Splash Pad. Number twenty, the administration advised the committee that construction work continued on the pickleball court at Iman Park. Number twenty-one, the administration advised the committee that the state of Ohio had not been funded for the inclusive playground equipment. Number twenty-two, the administration noted that trail work continued. Number twenty-three, oh, that's the end. Respectfully submitted Ted Hawke, Chairperson, Service Safety and Recreation Committee, and Mrs. Kelly Ford, Recording Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Hawke. Do we have any questions or comments or anything about that report? If not, does someone want to make a motion to accept?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Hawke.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Shilts.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Call.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Denon, you are up.
Thank you. Would like to thank everybody involved with the Fayette County Fair. That is a wonderful opportunity for the community and a wonderful way for, in particular, young people to gain some new experiences there. And Sylvia can talk to you about chickens and young gentlemen. But in particular, would like to thank the Fair Board for their work and the Junior Fair Board because that is a, I don't think people realize how much work that is out there. If you just casually go out, if you think about it, that is a tremendous amount of organization and effort that is required. The main paving effort we have completed, and we're very happy with that. The quality of the work is very good, and we are enormously pleased by that. We still have Oakland Avenue. We'll be doing some paving work down there. You may see us out doing the striping work, and that would be the folks doing the thermoplastic. So you'll notice that. Pickleball, we repaved down there. And probably next week, we will have that back up in full operation. You have to let the asphalt set for a little bit before you go down there and paint. And we have communicated to the school district a desire to repaint several of the tennis courts down by the football field as pickleball courts. And I have told them I'm in the mood to paint, so they better, if they don't want that to happen, they better tell us pretty quick. Because that, we already know people down there, they're playing pickleball, and we hope to be able to take care of that with the school district. Our well out by the YMCA, we have gone down four hundred feet. The good news is that there is water, but we don't think it will be in the volume as the other two wells out there. So we will be putting a pump on that and test pumping it to see how much we actually get there. But we went down to, the well driller calls it red rock, and I don't understand the significance of that, other than the fact that once you get there, they're in the hole, I won't go any further. So that is now a very deep well, so hopefully it'll be quite reliable. But the volume of water certainly isn't going to be what the other two are, but it will be in a positive direction. Water reserves for this time of year are all right. It's been hot and dry for quite a while. I don't think people realize quite how dry. But we're in decent shape there. But that creek is, it's come up a little bit, but it needs to have a little bit more water and flow along a little bit better for us. You have tonight the floodplain legislation that we talked about before. And that is fairly minor tweaks to the floodplain legislation, what we used to regulate that. That is not a horribly interesting topic, but it is something that is quite necessary and does the community a great deal of credit and allows us to regulate development in the floodplain in a responsible and reasonable manner. Tonight, we got all a bit of a theme. I suppose you would call it the, I don't want to call it the old. Why don't we call it the cherished that are going to move on to different activities and phases in their life and a new opportunity that I'm very excited about. Before we start that, I want to say to Butch, he's oh, well, kind of the last of our very old familiar faces. It's not the most enjoyable task tonight. And Butch is from a family that quite honestly gave much more to Washington Courthouse than they ever took. And for that, we will be eternally grateful.
But now, Tim needs to introduce you to a new young fellow.
Oh, the old with the new. Oh, we're going to miss Butch a lot. I'm going to miss having someone to talk to, much like I missed Martin back there. He showed up, but thank Martin for me. Yeah, I'm not sure if that's Lieutenant Robinson, Captain Robinson, I'm not sure who that is. Well, that's recorded, right? Good. I'm having fun, sorry. It's really exciting night, so I am having a lot of fun tonight. So thank you very much, because it's very exciting, Butch is moving on. And we now are introducing to you Nick Brandon, newest member of our department. You'll be starting August second, so Nick, please stand up, come on up here and we'll say hi to everybody. Nick has finished fire school. He joined us late last year as a volunteer firefighter. He then immediately went to fire, to the Fire Academy because of a grant through the Ohio Fire, the State of Ohio Fire Marshal's Office. They're trying to encourage volunteer firefighting, and he was able to enter the Fire Academy and spend, what was it, eight, ten weeks? Ten weeks, ten weeks, learning how to do this job at the professional level. So Nick, tell them about yourself.
Good evening, everyone. I am local Washington Courthouse, graduated from Miami Trace. I have a fiancee and a two-year-old daughter. I've been a volunteer at Bloomberg for about ten years, and I'm excited about starting this career path.
Ten years? Did you start when you were three? Don't look too old.
Nineteen.
Oh, okay. Everybody looks really young to me anymore. I don't know why that is.
He seems pretty young, but he has a military background. Good family. His father-in-law was a state trooper. Just retired recently in May. Also a friend of mine, as far as that goes. Good family, he's got a real good pedigree, you might say, as far as firefighting goes and civil service, civic service. So he will do quite well. We were very excited for him and wish him the best. We'll do everything we can to support him. This happens to be the crew that he will be assigned to. And they have already been constantly calling and badgering him about what he needs to have, where he needs to have, making sure he has property in forms and his room set up so he has a place that he can go and hide and read and learn. And they're already planning his education and concentrating. So, yeah, if I may, I might even do one more thing while we're here that I didn't plan to, but why not do it? Steve, you want to stand up for me? Not really, but I'm going to do it. I said stand up, Steve. We love Steve. We're asking Steve, it's one of our favorite things to do, is Butch is going, I think I'm Steve Moore. But Steve is going to be your next lieutenant. So he will be taking our young friend Nick under his wing and educating him on how to be a professional firefighter for the city of Washington Courthouse.
Very good.
I think with the guidance of Jason and Steve. And Bill has turned out to be a fantastic firefighter. He's only been with us for, what, two years now?
Almost.
Almost two years. And he's, he has excelled at what he's doing. So I think that Nick will have a place to grow and be the best that he can be. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Congratulations on your lieutenant. I want to say congratulations, congratulations on retirement. So well done, everybody. I got a great department. It doesn't matter what group we sit here, I'd be bragging about.
That's great. Glad to meet our new firefighters. And congratulations, Lieutenant. Do we have something else we need to do now?
You have a task, Mr. Lynch.
These are good tasks. I can say that for sure. I'm going to read this first, but then I want to come down. Well, maybe I'll just come down first. Butch, if you would come up here. First thing I got to tell you is, when I started reading this tonight, I didn't know what your name was other than Butch. Anyway, I have a proclamation of appreciation. And I think Mr. Denon's comments, I can't really top those, but I want to read this official proclamation. Whereas Mr. Herman Butch Williamson retired from the city of Washington Courthouse after serving said city for thirty-five years, ending his service to said city in position of Fire Lieutenant E N T. July thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. Whereas the city of Washington Courthouse takes great pride in the professionalism and dedication of its city personnel and whereas the city of Washington Courthouse duly recognizes Mr. Williamson's services to the city of Washington Courthouse and desires to express best wishes for Mr. Williamson's continued prosperity and happiness upon the occasion of his retirement. Now therefore, I, Mr. Dale Lynch, Council Chairperson of the City Council of Washington Courthouse, Ohio, Fayette County, do hereby present this proclamation of appreciation to Mr. Herman Butch Williamson and express sincere gratitude and recognition for services rendered by Mr. Williamson to the city of Washington Courthouse. And witness whereof, we have here unto subscribe with our names this twenty-fourth day of July in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-four, and I have signed it, as has Mr. Denon. And you also have a plaque which just indicates that you have worked for us in the city for thirty-five years, Butch. I wonder seriously, how many fires you have fought in thirty-five years? Your buddy's back there with two.
He showed up at four hundred and worked two of them.
Isn't it great to have friends like that? You're so great with you. Seriously, I don't know how many fires you've fought. I know it's more than two. But thank you so much for the people of Washington Courthouse. Thirty-five years of service is wonderful. And I know, I'm sure you're going to find other things to do.
Hello. Yeah, I got stuff like me, I got it. Thank you.
Congratulations. Enjoy it. I know you're, oh, just getting away from those guys. Congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, can we get?
They're staying here behind him, I guess. We could probably do that.
Make sure. No, you are here.
Maybe some chairs the other way here. Chair, can you get up here, Ted? Speaking, where's Jim? We got to get Jim up here.
We're good? Let me see if I see everybody. Caleb, maybe just a little here this way. Count to three. One, two, three. And one more. One, two, three. There we go.
Can we get our new firefighter up here, Butch?
One going out, one coming in. The one going out and one coming in. There you go.
Kelly, can you get a picture of this group for us?
Sylvia, I need you to. Jim, just a little bit this way now. Jim Christman, sorry. Just a little bit more. Actually, on the other side. Hold on. Ready? Three. Nope, no, I can't see Steve. Okay, pull it in. Sylvia, this way a little bit more. Three, two, one. I got you. Okay. One more time. Three, two, one. Have it. All right, thanks. Sorry.
Get the whole crew. The whole crew, get them out.
If you want to get the whole crew, we'll get the whole crew.
You're nice.
Jerry, come up here. Jerry, come up here. Let's get the whole crew. You want to get the whole crew?
Jason, that includes you. Jason, that includes you too.
Hey, Kelly, she sent me a copy of this.
Thanks to all of you guys.
Okay. Jim, you might have to be on a chair back there.
You'll be, you get a chair.
No, I don't, somebody may have to get on a chair.
You can't see my heart, Katie.
See everybody this way.
It's okay.
No, it's good. A little bit. Ready? Three, two, one. One more time. Three, two, one. Have it.
Oh, you have heart. You have a heart after all. I didn't realize you had.
There you go. How you doing?
Butch Lynch.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, guys. In one remaining matter, you had a quite detailed discussion, a lengthy discussion about fireworks in our last committee. And we have a citizen who I would think would be keenly interested in that discussion. You want me to talk about that, Mr. Lynch, or?
Yes, go right ahead. You can summarize it as well as anybody.
Two things will occur. We'll bring a draft piece of legislation that will set up a licensing system for the display of fireworks in the city of Washington Courthouse to the Service and Safety Committee. And then you would also, in the water bill, now everybody's building a different cycle, you'd start to see a survey with some questions for citizens related to fireworks. So those two things, is what you'll see occurring.
We are moving. You're welcome. Okay, Director of Finance, this is always interesting because we've had a finance meeting and he's presented to us. But if you want to present to the community, that would be fine.
Real quick, for third quarter, our statement of cash is in good shape. We've started to see some good returns on the investment side, which will set us up for long-term gains. So, but overall, for this time of the year where we're at, we're in pretty good shape and pretty comfortable, so it's all I got.
Again, we have gotten details before, so. Mr. City Attorney.
I really don't have a report tonight, Mr. Chairman.
I know you said they've been busy out there.
They've been busy. Trash.
Trash, grass. Well, grass isn't growing much.
Yeah, not much. A lot of trash.
We have a clerk's report tonight. Kelly, you want to let us know about that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before counsel is a request from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for a D-five liquor permit to be transferred from the Old Red Wagon Incorporated, doing business as Back in Time Flower Gift Shop and Patio located at one oh-one East Court Street, Washington Courthouse, Ohio, four three one six oh, to North Shore Primitives and Antiques LLC, doing business as North Shore Home Decor and More located at one fifty-three South Heinz Street, Washington Courthouse, Ohio, four three one six oh. Does counsel have any objections to this request?
I do. Also, there's usually a police report on this and the names of the people that are, of the owners. None of that's on here.
They don't, they did not provide that. What you received is what was provided from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control to me. That was it. That was the only thing.
I know who owns that building, but if we're not allowed to say, we'll say, but I know who owns it. It's a local person, Ted.
The only thing that also is provided is my instructions on what to send back if you request it.
Well, I move that we request a hearing on this.
Is there a second?
Do we have, do we know what they're going to be using their facility for? Are they going to sell liquor? Are they going to have a patio?
As a sake of discussion, I will do a symbolic second because I think we technically have to second before we have discussion anyway, so I will second.
Okay. Ted's.
Yeah.
Ted's.
So you can talk.
Okay. Sorry about that. You know, you legalese, you know. I was just curious. When I, when I saw this in the packet, I did drive down East Street and I noticed the door sign is right at the back of the building. So they're within the door, so they would be also able to carry their drinks wherever. But nobody seems to know what their objective is, though, as far as, they're going to have a patio like Salty Brawls or?
I don't know, but the D-five would probably be the same as what Back in Time had, that she can sell, but I don't know.
The exact liquor permit. Now, D-five is a fairly expensive permit, but I understand, and it has been some time ago, and it has been from the other side of the equation, the other side of it. It was the intention to perform a similar business to what Kendra did. But that permit would give for the owner the ability to do other stuff.
So I would think they would probably have some outside seating, I would think.
There has to be some seating given to D-five.
Okay, right, so there. Even though it could be symbolic.
Okay. Seating is symbol, at least symbolic food requirement, I think.
I think you're right.
Any other discussion, questions? Okay, then we need to take a roll call.
Yep. Hawke. This is for a requested hearing.
Yes.
Johnson.
No.
Shilts.
No.
Blair.
No.
Call.
No.
Christman.
No.
Lynch.
No.
Okay. Writing a note here. We have no other local residents or taxpayers, so we will move into legislation previously introduced. The first is ordinance number twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-four, second reading.
I'll move that we place ordinance number twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-four on second reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hawke.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Shilts.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Call.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-nine dash two thousand and twenty-four, an ordinance rezone in eight seventeen South Fayette Street, parcel two one three. eight seventeen South Bead Street, parcel two one three dash zero two eight dash three dash zero zero dash zero five three dash zero zero, eight twenty-one South Bead Street, parcel two one three dash zero two eight dash three dash zero 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 dash zero five two zero zero, nine oh three South Bead Street, parcel two one three dash zero two eight dash three dash zero 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 dash zero five one dash zero, from R one C to CF, and one zero zero four South Bead Street, parcel two one three dash zero two eight dash three dash zero 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 dash zero three four dash zero, from B one to CF Community Facilities.
Next is resolution number R twenty-four, twenty-two, four, and it is second reading.
I believe we put resolution R twenty-four, twenty-two, four, on the second reading.
On second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Hawk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R twenty-four dash two thousand and twenty-four, a resolution authorizing the city manager, Joseph J. Denon, of the City of Washington Courthouse, to award a contract to Cox Paving Construction for the East Market Street Roadway Improvement Project, Phase One.
Move for adoption.
I'll second that.
Roll call?
Hawk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
We have one bit of new legislation and that is ordinance number thirty, twenty-two, four, first reading.
I believe we put ordinance thirty, twenty-two, four, first reading.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Hawk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Ordinance number thirty dash two thousand and twenty-four, an ordinance amending flood plain regulations and repealing ordinance number five dash two thousand and fifteen.
Alrighty. Uh, Mr. Schultz, what do you have this evening?
Well. Again, I wanna thank everybody for coming that comes to the meeting, so there's some discussion that goes on. You know, we did this, and I think we alluded to it a little earlier in committee, Sylvia said something about the trails and we were finishing, finishing up on the last end of the trails. I spent some time up north in the last two or three days in Sandusky, Ohio, and they have a heck of a nice program going on up there. You know, we put money into the trails, we put money into, uh, taking down some of the blight houses, uh, in the area, trying to unify and, and make the community a little bit nicer for everybody. The program I noticed they had going on up there is, of all things, which we forgot about, and probably most communities do, is a sidewalk repair. They have a certain amount of money they set aside for the next three to five years to repair sidewalks around the community of people, because there's certain people that will not use the trails, but they'll walk up and down the sidewalks. You've got schoolchildren walking up and down the sidewalks, and a lot of people walk in the street because the sidewalks are such disrepair. So they have a lot more money than we do, they, they took COVID money, eight hundred eighty-one thousand dollars, and set it aside over the next five years to do just sidewalk repair. They specify certain area of the town every year to repair, because the homeowners do not have the money that it takes to repair these sidewalks. So the city takes that on themselves. Now, some sidewalks don't need complete repair, they just may need some updating, some patching and fixing up. And some of them just, they're there, but they're underneath a bunch of grass, they need to be cleaned up, fixed up. And the area I would start on, if we could ever agree on something like this, would be in, like, coming into town off of Columbus Avenue, maybe coming into town off of Dayton Avenue, coming into town off of twenty-two, different areas of town where people are driving into town seeing this, and they see nice, clean-looking sidewalks. That kinda gives an appearance for, uh, the community, kinda give us a, a, an idea of what they can expect from our community. So it's quite a project, it's quite something to get into and work with, but it's something I think we should have some conversation about in committee sometime. Maybe not this year, but maybe we were discussing setting money aside in the budget for the playground equipment, that comes under this type thing. Maybe the tip money that Mr. Denon was referring to earlier on in the committee meeting, maybe some of this money could be used for the sidewalk, it doesn't, you, you know, I don't think we're gonna come up with eight hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand dollars in sidewalk, let's say we have a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand every year to put towards taking care of some of these advanced disrepaired sidewalks where the homeowner cannot afford to do it. So we step in and kinda clean it up, fix them up, and give it a nice appearance, where schoolchildren walk and people driving, it's just something to beautify the, the city, just like we do the downtown. We're doing things for the vitality, vitality task force, doing the things for the downtown. This would be the same thing, but it'd be all over town where it's needed. I don't think you have sidewalks on Farmington Lane, do you? You have one on one side. Long as there's a sidewalk on one side of the street, that's all we care about, long as there's some kind of sidewalk, that would be fine. So, but that's something maybe we could have a discussion about in the future to kinda look at these things, how can we make this better and give the community a better look? And one other thing, this is a little bit more profound than what I usually come up with, but doing nothing is very hard to do, you never know when you're finished. So you gotta work on it. Thank you very much, that's all I've got.
Mrs. Call, what do you have this evening?
I think my child would agree with you, Steve, he, he's complaining often about sidewalks.
There you go.
Who I complain to.
You know how I come up with this idea around here, I had a citizen here in town said the same, here's what he said to me, when I asked him about his sidewalks, he said, your sidewalk looks terrible, would you fix them up a little bit? He says, you know what, I never use the sidewalk out front. He said that, let the school fix it, that's all, uses it as a school kids, because he lives on Young Street, the school kids are coming out, he said, let the school fix it, I never use it. Good point. Anyway, go ahead, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, you're fine, you're fine. Uh, we did enjoy a week at the fair. It was, as Mr. Denon said, a monumental effort that I am glad I only take a small part in. We had our chicken adventure, the chicken escaped. The ten-year-old was able to recover the chicken and he said that next year he thinks he's probably gonna take his rocks with his geology project because they're a lot slower. But kudos to everyone who does volunteer and work with the fair, because, gosh, that is just a huge effort, so, that's, that's all I've got.
Can we inquire how the, the chicken did?
She didn't win anything and he was super thankful, and we, we had never, we're not, like, innate four-haters, so none of us had any idea what to expect. So we watched five hours' worth of market chickens and finally Arthur was like, if my chicken wins, I have to stay even longer.
Keep coming, keep coming back.
So my husband suspected that he may have let the chicken escape just to ensure that he would not be victorious. But she's back home now and quite happy to be so, I think.
Mr. Blair, what do you have, sir?
Nothing tonight, chair.
You don't have a chicken story?
Chicken story.
Miss, uh, here, look out. Mr. Hawk, what do you got?
Well, uh, I don't always agree with Mr. Schultz, but I do on the sidewalks. No, really, I, I, our approach here in, here in town is that we make the homeowner maintain his sidewalk. I can see requiring a business to do that because it's part of their business, but the homeowners, a lot of homeowners don't even ever use their sidewalk. We park in the back and we're very seldom out on our sidewalk and, but sidewalks, good sidewalks look good in town. And, uh, I, I think having a fund and maybe changing the way we go about it, because some people have to fix a sidewalk and then there's people don't even have a sidewalk, they don't have to do anything. And, uh, so, thanks for bringing that up, Steve.
Worth a discussion.
Yeah.
And I just stumbled onto while I was in Sandusky, Ohio.
I think it's a good discussion.
And, and we, we went to, my daughter, who's a very thoughtful person, she took her kids and her parents to the East Coast to go to Diggerland. I don't know if anybody's ever heard of that.
What is it?
But it's amusement park made up of construction equipment. And they got all kinds of ways of using them and so on, they're, they're, they're safety to the extreme, which is kinda bad, but, um, you, you couldn't really operate them in the way you're supposed to, but anyway, it was a lot of fun, there was, uh, also beside it, there was a, a water park, and really enjoyed the waves, where they make waves and make you do stuff you're not used to doing. And, uh, I, I just enjoyed it, and we, we went on the boardwalk, we, we were so close to Atlantic City, we went on to Atlantic City and went on the boardwalk, and that's how I ended up getting my packet all messed up, because I was eating my saltwater taffy that I bought there when I was studying my packet last weekend. Everything stuck together.
Tell the truth, you probably didn't know this one.
Well. That was the, the salve to get it. But anyway, it was a lot of fun, I appreciate, it, it's good to travel with family, we were pretty crowded in one car, all seven of us. But, uh, but it was a lot of fun and we enjoyed it, went through the southern part of Philadelphia, all that history there, and believe me, the history is all still there, every, those decaying railroad tracks and overpasses and everything, but it was really interesting, uh, to see all of that and, uh, really, really enjoyed it. And, uh, so, just kudos to my daughter for thinking of us and doing that for us, it was a lot of fun being with the grandkids too. So, and that's all I have.
Mr. Johnson, what do you have?
Um, I have many, many clients, just part of the line of my work, who complain often about police officers, but not one has complained about firefighters, uh, which I think says a lot about firefighters and the job they do and the role, obviously different, not saying that my clients are always right, because, uh, they're not, but.
They're not.
But it does speak volumes whenever, uh, you know, you have an organization that does so much good work for people and is, um, definitely appreciated in this community for what they do, so, thank you to them for coming in again. In fact, one of the biggest, uh, I'll point this out because I think he does deserve recognition for, one of the biggest advocates, for example, on the fireworks issue tonight was, uh, Mr. Jody Langley, uh, who provides valuable insights to us, we rely on him a lot and, and his decisions and his opinions. On that note, we would welcome, I think, uh, input from the Fire Department and the Police Department on this issue, as we value the input from the many citizens in a survey we're gonna send out. More information is good and less information is just something that, you know, we, we shouldn't be operating on, if we can get more information, I think we should, I think that's what we're doing. Steve brought up a good point with sidewalks, we've talked about sidewalks before in the past, and it's sidewalks, curbs, and gutters, which are all the responsibility of the homeowner. And so, whenever all of those or any of those are in disrepair, the homeowner is expected to pay for it. Well, I don't know if many of you noticed, it's a pretty tough economy out there, and so it is a hard thing to, for many homeowners with interest rates on their homes as high as it is, uh, to afford extra things in the margins, including large repairs around their home, and sidewalks, curbs, and gutters. I think that, if I remember right, Joe, you had the best solution to this, I don't think I was on board at the time yet, but I don't think I can get around it, the more and more I've thought about it over the years, which is that if, if the people cannot afford to fix sidewalks, curbs, and gutters, the other option would be for the city to take over all maintenance and responsibility for sidewalks, curbs, and gutters. I think there's a hard, hard discussion to be had there, because that leads to only one thing, which is the big holdup. If we're gonna take on responsibility for all the sidewalks, curbs, and gutters, we gotta make sure we can pay for it. And that means taxes. So, there's a hard discussion to be had there with how much we can afford, how much, uh, we can take on, how much we could potentially save by doing it in batches rather than individuals paying it on their own, one at a time, perhaps putting it on a schedule would save us some money in, in our own margins, and we could do it more efficiently, perhaps. Uh, there's a lot of discussion to be had there, but I think it's a discussion worth pursuing, just like our discussion with fireworks, so. I was just reminded of all of that prior discussion we've had, whenever Steve brought it up, it is something that, you know, maybe we need to take a second look at and, uh, perhaps have that conversation again, and maybe we're at a point, maybe we are at a point where the people would be okay with giving up control of their sidewalks, curbs, and gutters to the city in exchange for, uh, maybe just a, a small but efficient tax with a fund specifically, that way people would know that only the money from, you know, that fund could be used on this project and that, you know, it couldn't go to anything else. So something responsible of that nature, uh, that might be something we would have to explore.
A point of information that we've thought about is, has the police and fire building is paid down that could give you options in the future, but people would have to vote on that?
Like Caleb said, it's, it's worth a future discussion, several discussions, probably we come to a conclusion.
And the, the new grant writing dynamic, if that comes to fruition, might prove helpful in that too?
Yeah, I mean, a lot of times when we've done a road project, you've seen us go ahead and replace her gutter and sidewalk because it's an integral part of the street. And sometimes you do the sidewalk, because in the process of rebuilding the, the street, you pretty much have obliterated the sidewalk. I mean, you've seen us do that quite a lot, I mean, it would, well, Washington Avenue would be an excellent example of that. But no, something that allowed you to go out to different streets in the community would be something to talk about.
Is that it, Caleb?
Yes.
Mr. Christman?
Mr. Schultz, thank you for mentioning sidewalks. The first time I mentioned them was my first year on council, we were down in the old building off the alley there. Gordon Davis chaired, Gordon Davis was the chairperson, so I mentioned it, uh, deplorable condition, and, uh, Gordon kind of came away, went, ah. And it all just dropped right then.
Oh, my goodness.
Two or three meetings later, I'm pretty sure it was Gordon who brought up sidewalks, all of a sudden it's the best thing since life.
The best thing that happened, like it was a whole new idea.
That was knees against the little log. So anyway, then later on, Joe will remember this, we brought it up, and we tried to get bids, and none of the local concrete guys would even make a bid on like one sidewalk. The feeling I think might have been, and this is just sort of my opinion, I think Joe has the same opinion, but the guys were just kinda independent and didn't really wanna work, I don't wanna say under the government, but under the spotlight.
Yeah, it is a government umbrella.
So, um, I'm not saying that, that they always wanted cash or anything, but maybe, you know, I don't know. But, uh, I, I know I brought it up a couple of times over the years, and I don't know a good solution, taxes are one thing, but then again, if the people can't afford to put walks in now and feed your kids, how they gonna, they hate to really tax more grant, but I wonder if you could get a grant for the whole city or not, I mean, I don't know.
Portions of the city, I mean.
Yeah.
It's worth a future discussion.
And it doesn't address the future, a tax would be a recurring revenue, a grant would be a one-time thing, and so, yeah, maintenance would be tough to, to do just grant by grant.
Yeah, well, if you could get a grant to hit the whole city, which I would be clear on, then maybe. off, and then maybe, once you go to pay the rounds, maybe put a tax on, start collecting, so you've got some money put back for the next 20 years to repair a sidewalk. I'm using that as a big deal. And there has to be some kind of solution, because all towns you go in don't have, well, I was angry at Joe one time, but don't have all bad sidewalks. Still, there are a lot of bad ones.
Yeah, there is.
And I've stumbled on them a few times. Of course, I'm old and clumsy anyways. Anyway, that's all I have. Thanks, everybody, for coming. Congratulations, Attorney Party, or Farm, and also, fortunately, retired. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, gee. Things have gone longer than I thought. In our county, conservative county, I hear people talking about taxes. I go, wait a minute, have I just moved to Columbus?
Yeah.
But anyway, people who own a house have enough money to have a house. People who rent, rent from somebody who has enough money to have those houses they rent from. I don't know. I have questions about.
Priorities.
There's also, and somebody said, there's a large part of Quail Run that doesn't have sidewalks. I'm pretty sure they probably won't vote for it.
Marilyn, you don't have sidewalks here, do you?
Anyway, it, it just is interesting to me. It's interesting to me, too, when I hear how bad the economy is, and I go out in the world and travel west, and I see incredible numbers of people in RVs, and, and I'm going, something isn't as bad as everybody says it is. I don't know, anyway.
Well, I think it's just their priorities.
Yeah, well.
If you, if you create the desire, they'll come up with the money.
It's great to recognize firefighters. The reason your clients get more complaints is because firefighters don't arrest them. I like to recognize our police officers. I think they do a great job, and if your clients didn't screw up, they wouldn't have to arrest them. Anyway, do we have a motion to adjourn?
We have a motion.
Second.
Rule call?
Hawk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yeah.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Chrisman?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes, we are adjourned at 23.